Bonnie, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can.
All right, welcome to the October 2nd, 2024 Planning Commission. I am Commissioner Bullock and we will start this meeting out with a prayer from Commissioner Mitchell.
Dear Heavenly Father, we're grateful to be here this evening. We're thankful for the opportunity to meet. We're grateful for the opportunities you have to serve and help in our community. We pray at this time that they would be with us throughout the meeting and help us to go through each agenda item in a orderly fashion and that we can all feel the way to share our comments and do so in an appropriate manner. And we're grateful for our city. We're thankful for staff and all those who continue to serve and make us a great place to be and to live. And we thank them and pray and do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please rise. So, item number one on is the approval of the agenda. Have we all had a chance to look at this and look for a motion to approve the agenda?
This is Commissioner Mitchell. I make a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Commissioner Tupaw, I second that.
Have a first and a second, all in favor? And then looking for an approval of the minutes from the September 18th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
Commissioner Tupaw, I make a motion to approve the minutes from the Planning Commission minutes on September 18th, 2024.
Shill, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, item number three, we need to appoint a pro temp, Planning Commission pro temp. Drew, how do we go about this again?
Well, as soon as I say this, whoever moves the fastest, actually it's a recommendation. Someone can nominate or recommend that so-and-so be the pro temp for the year 2024. And it'll, it'll go, we do it, have to do it every year. So it's just by nomination. The person doesn't have to accept it, you know, but, and then someone can, you know, you motion to do it and then a second, and then you would vote on that. So it's like I say, it's almost like a gunfight, you know, whoever wants to draw first and get it out. But that's, it comes from, from you folks, the commission body, so.
Does anybody want to do it?
Yeah, sometimes you can ask for a volunteer and others may say, as long as they want to do it, I don't, you know, that is the other option as well to do.
I'll just tell you where I am. I talked to the mayor about a month ago and I want to be done by the first of the year. And I told him if he could find somebody sooner, I would, I would let that happen. And so that's kind of where I am. I, I want to be done end of December. I've been here four years at that time and maybe I'm supposed to go longer, I don't know, but I'm going to sell away a little bit. I'm going to enjoy those guys.
So in other words, Doug's saying, don't nominate me because I won't be here past, you know. But, but I, I think this one, if we, you know, wanted to, whoever does it, I mean, that's a short time. Whoever that would be, I would just say, hey, and then you can re-up it, you know, but you might want to think of that long-term for a next year, plus the, what is there, three months left in the year? It's kind of where we're at.
I don't mind doing it, but end of December, I, I want to be history.
I talked to Pete just a little bit. I mean, I'm more than happy to, to do it. I think it'd be a great experience. Don't feel like I'm fully educated, but.
Now's a good time to learn.
Well, if it helps you, nobody's fully educated when it comes to planning because there's just so many things. So don't let that be a worry to you, so.
Are we nominating then? Is that what we?
Anybody can put it up, yeah.
Hold on, I need, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Shill. I would nominate Cody Mitchell to be the interim pro temp when Pete's not around.
This is Commissioner Tupaw. I second that.
So I have a first from Commissioner Shill and a second from Commissioner Tupaw. Shill?
Aye.
Tupaw?
Aye.
Mitchell? I'm Bullock. I'm in as well. So Cody's the new pro temp. Item number four is Declaration of Abstentions and Conflicts. Does anybody have any?
I have none.
Okay. Number five A is a request for a conditional use permit for a restaurant/quick-service establishment located at 293 East Telegraph. The applicant is Randy Walker with Civil Science and we'll turn it over to Eldon.
Thank you, Commissioners. Cody, congratulations on the pro temp status. Ingress and egress to the site will not change. The new building will utilize the existing access points off of Telegraph for this site. Also, a 10-foot landscape strip adjacent to Telegraph and in front of the new building is being proposed. The screened trash enclosure is seen from Telegraph. However, the applicant is proposing a heavily landscaped area to buffer this area. Required parking for the entire site, and that's taking into account the new building here, which we're looking at, is 133 parking stalls. Seventy-six of these stalls are used by the Hilltop Church tenant after regular business hours and on the weekend. Taking the church use out of the equation, required parking is 57 and the applicant is proposing 78 parking stalls or providing 78 stalls on this site. The applicant is asking for parking relief as the church parking does not conflict with the other businesses. If the church use was ever discontinued and/or converted into an office or retail space, the required parking for the entire site would be 66 parking stalls. And again, they're proposing 78 parking stalls on this site. The new building will be 24 feet, 4 inches tall, constructed of a combination of tan rock, white stucco, and dark metal finishes. The exterior finishes of the building, along with the landscaping, are aesthetically pleasing. The zoning designation at this location is C-2 and the surrounding zoning is C-2 to the northeast, south, and west. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of C-24-15, allowing for a new quick-service establishment located at 293 East Telegraph, as shown in the exhibits. And this is on to City Council with the findings and conditions, as noted in the staff report. And we are happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Are they counting the parking stalls on the upper level? Is that what that is?
Correct.
Is there any way to access getting down to those stalls from the quick-service restaurant?
At this time, you'd have to go out on the sidewalk.
Around the building and down?
Correct.
I'm, I'm confused. Does it face Telegraph?
The new building?
Yeah.
Yes.
And I went over there. I can't find a church.
Right now it's a.
I can't find churches. I don't know.
Maybe it's up on top in one of the office spaces.
Okay.
And right now, this is the parking lot, correct? It's just asphalt? Yeah.
Or is the, is that?
There will be.
There is a preschool in Houston there.
Do they actually have a tenant until?
For this new building, I haven't caught land of a tenant.
Are they building it on the con?
Still so blurry, but it says, it said it's not a soda shop. Somewhere I remember reading, like specifically, it said it's not a soda shop. Yeah, that's a street. Go by there, look at it. And right now it is a parking lot, but it's really not a utilized parking lot. It's just.
It's just paved over, like to dust down is what it looks like.
It's always been hard to park. It looks to me like it. I mean, I don't, I don't go get pizzas very often, but we've been there before and it's a thugger. And, and so I, I think we're just, we're kind of muddying it up a little bit more. When I first saw it, I thought maybe they'd turn that thing down, but they're not doing that.
And you are thinking the right one, right? Dominoes is in there. There's a laundromat right there on the, okay. Because in my mind, I've never seen that very populated, that.
The dominoes and laundromat gets that way from time to time, but I don't see anything on the other side. I just wish there was a way that people could park up above and access it down without having to go around.
That stair that comes off.
Have a stairway or something that comes off. That would be my only recommendation for that. Just because if you're going to utilize that upper parking, I feel like there needs to be some sort of egress, some, some, some way so that people can get up and down without having to go all the way over to 300 East and down.
Well, and everything is right in, right out.
Yeah, and it has to be because there's a median there. So that's not a problem, but in order to, in order, and if you're going left, you're going to go up and turn left and then come down. And so you want to be able to walk down those stairs if you're not using, using the drive-through. That would be my only recommendation is if they add some sort of stairway or something there. I mean, because they have, they have the handicap down below, so they don't need to worry about that. But at least have a stairway so that they can park up there and walk down. Would that eliminate one of their, that might eliminate one of their. Will that eliminate one of your parking stalls up there? Yeah, we'll, I'll have you come up in a second.
So is this a drive-through or just a restaurant?
Both. Yeah, sit, sit down and a drive-through.
Bring it up, I guess.
You have any more questions for Eldon? Okay, I'll open this up to the public hearing portion of this. If anyone would like to speak on this, this particular item. Please take your name for the, for the record.
Lindsey Coleman. We're with the Flavors since he's down the street. And I'm just not understanding where they're going to have their water pot or water retention, why they have so little landscaping compared to what we required, and why they'll be able to enter and leave on Telegraph when we're not able to, which is really affecting our business a lot. If we could do the same thing, it would be beneficial, but I don't understand why they would be able to and we're not able to.
Well, I think some of the answer on that is because they do have a ride-in, ride-out on Telegraph where you do not. I guess you have a right, right-in off Telegraph and a right-out, but no left. Is that correct?
Well, while you're coming up, it's a simple answer. Those are already existing. That's why.
They're what?
They're already existing.
We had existing also. We had two driveways with our previous house.
You changed the use on yours is why. It was a residence and then it went to a commercial and that's why.
And that's why we can't exit on Telegraph? It's really causing probably 30, 40% of the people don't want to come back because of the difficulty that was imposed with this by not being able to exit on Telegraph. And if they would be able to, I would only think we should be able to also. But the comments that we're receiving about trying to get out of it, they're stopping people from coming back.
I can only tell you, we have an access management plan. That's what was put to your project. It had to be met that way. Again, your people are exiting right, right into a light. These ones are exiting with traffic going down the street. Could be one of the issues. But I'm just telling you, that's just what it is right now, so.
I, you know, we think it should just be fair to all, but that's just my thoughts. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this? Okay, then I will close the public portion of this. If, Randy, if you could come up and talk to us about the.
Yeah, Randy Walker with Civil Science representing the applicant tonight. So the, with the improvement of this restaurant pad site, they're going to be redoing the parking. The whole parking lot down below, they're going to tear it out and resurface it. So we're going to clean up the striping and in doing so, it's actually going to improve parking for the existing down, like the laundromat and the use is probably a drive-through. The Dominoes has the, on the east side of Dominoes is the stair rail that comes down. The issue would be is to get a set of stairs to come down on the west side. Topography-wise, that wall that you can see across the top is substantial. It is a 10-foot wall. I'm not sure how you would put a set of stairs in there. That would meet code just because of the incline. It'd be out in one parking lot and out into the other.
If it, if it's a hindrance to them, I guess they won't come back.
Have we got any pictures of the building or any conceptuals or do it, not at that point?
No, they're.
Oh, there we go. Are we going to do any remodel on the existing?
Um, I actually asked just because I was curious. They've, they would like to.
Well, I'm sure they would like to.
I mean, money's going into the parking lot, resurfacing, so I think they're.
Is it the same owner?
Yeah, this is one parcel. Like on ownership map, it is a single owner. All buildings are owned by one. So I mean, it's to their best interest to, they're, they're trying to revamp the corner.
So the stairway that's in the existing building goes between, does it come through like the center of the?
Yeah, it does. I remember. I forgot about it.
There's an exterior one though. Like for example, if I'm going to Dominoes, I'm lazy and I always call take, or delivery. But if I do go, I go, because I live out in fields, I go up through and I come back and I actually park up on top. Because that intersection, because you do, are restricted on Telegraph, there's stairs on 300. There's a rail. It's outside too. There's a stair right here.
Okay, and isn't there one on the?
There's one in the middle too.
Yeah. So when I personally.
I forgot about that.
Park up on top and I walk the outside rail and then you're just right there. We're such a car-focused, talked to staff about that this morning, car-focused community. It's good to get people out and walk. Yeah, that wall that you can see that's retaining right there, there's, we've got geotags involved. You can obviously see there's seepage. So we've got to rectify that, but that's probably 10 feet right there.
Is it, is it going to attach to the other building?
No. So the building that Drew just showed you the ringery of sits right here. And look at this image. They've got a truck in there delivering.
Yeah, don't point that out, Brandy. That's always a nightmare.
It's amazing what they can fit. But yeah, this one's restricted. We have a median out in front of us on Telegraph, so.
While you're here, somebody asked about the drainage. Are you going underground drainage on this then?
Yeah, we'll meet, we'll meet all the requirements of stormwater and with Public Works. Uh, we do have, like I said, the geotechnical engineers have been involved because you can see on that image.
You'll have a reservoir underneath, a detention underneath?
Yeah, so this site's already hard-surface, so we're not actually creating any additional drainage. However, we do need to mitigate the springs, the existing spring that you're seeing.
It was a real quick, I guess, comment about using the landscape or the vegetation to kind of bury the trash enclosure that's going to be out on the surface.
Yeah, it's, you can see it on the image right now. It is completely exposed from Telegraph. It's just a canister sitting there. So in fact, as far as drainage goes, we're actually decreasing the hard surface because we are adding landscape, which this parcel currently right now does not have in front of it, adjacent to where the proposed building is going to be installed. So we'd be putting the buffer in front of the dumpster area, the dumpster, and actually constructing an enclosure. Because right now it's just free setting out there. They'd build a six-foot solid masonry block wall with metal gates on the front to completely enclose it and then put the landscape in between it and Telegraph. And then, which is right here. This is the existing curb lines, there's a couple of struts out there in the city's projects. We're actually bumping it out in additional. I think it's like, I can't remember. We've worked with staff on increasing it so it's a minimum of the 10-foot requirement. And then by the dumpster, it's wider.
Hey Drew, with, can you go back to the other elevation? Yeah, so it just seems like we're, we're trying to really, I don't know. It's going to be a clamberated mess. That's the easiest way I can say it. It's probably not the right way. But it seems like we have a parcel here. We almost have a parcel there. The, this parking does absolutely nothing for us, for these buildings, because they got to come clear around and, and enter. Put your little building there and zoom out there. I, I don't know. I'm, I'm out of the box.
So as the parcel sits right now, what the city, what you see is what you get. There, there's no way to really expand the existing building in a manner that makes sense to utilize the area that Drew has his cursor over. So it would infinitely remain just.
I don't think we can really, you say we can park it and if they park up at, on the 50-yard line, yeah, they can park it. But I think they, it's a, it's, it's going to be a hard sell for a tenant unless you already have a tenant in Telegraph.
I think they have a tenant. I don't want to misspeak, but I do believe they have a tenant, yeah. I mean, I love projects along Telegraph, you know, revamping the city's downtown. This is a sore spot, this corner, and to have it just be a paved parking lot, that building as it sits today is overparked. So that area is seldom used. You get vehicles just parked there overnight or randomly parked. So I think anything that's done to this parcel that's responsible is an asset to the downtown.
Yeah, just, just for some little insight on that, the parking area up here basically feeds, because it's a two-story building, right? So this parking lot basically feeds the upstairs units. And the one down, parking area down below feeds the units that are on the bottom. I mean, it's kind of how it ended up working and it may not be the absolute best thing, but that's kind of how this evolved into what it is. Is that parking lot up there is mostly for the upstairs units and again, the one down here for the lower ones.
Yeah, I don't know the image date and time. It's recent. You can see flavors in it. Well, I don't know what the time of day it was taken, but judging by shadows on cars, telephone lines, it's pretty midday. So that being said, you can see the condition of the parking lot as far as vacancy and availability is concerned.
Whatever. I'm a negative, but that's, I'm a negative milli. I'm sorry. Well, I don't disagree, but I think we've, we've got a mess on that corner. And I don't think this is going to help the mess.
Yeah, so this is Commissioner, I agree that there's maybe a mess there. I'm concerned about the one across the street, if it's going to make it and then what does.
Oh, I am too.
The city, when it doesn't, this one, I feel like makes more sense because of the flow of traffic. The other unit, the flow of the track goes up, you know, towards the ball fields where this one, same setup, but goes down Main Street, which makes more sense. I mean, the one across the street is, you know, yeah, shifted one way or the other. But that's just the way it is. That, that corner, that's how it has to flow. So I think to answer the gentleman's question or his concern, there is no other way for his, his traffic to flow through his property. And it just so happens that this one ends up being the same type of situation. But because the orientation and the location, his flow flows, this one flows better with traffic. And I don't, you know, depending on what goes in there, I know, I do feel like it, it's going to help and it's not going to hinder. Because what's there is just a vacant bear.
So on the drive-through, are there dimensions between the building and this building to come in? That's their stack?
Yeah, yeah, it'd have to be. I think like they were saying, it's not big enough to be a sit-down, so you're not going to see a lot of people coming in there to park and sit. It's just going to be a.
Hot dog shop.
So Drew, is there, is there a way for like the, the other project across the street to request a change in their access?
Well, they can request, but that, that's what was talked about 98% of the whole time that they brought their project in. It all hinged on movement, traffic in and out. That's what the council, previous even commissioners debated and debated and debated. That was the issue that was the number one issue with, with their project. And that's, you know, and then it followed the accident. In fact, they actually lightened some of the standards because of the way the lot and the configuration was. And it just hadn't, you know, had to come to that. And again, meeting all the standards, you know, I don't, I mean, I'm sorry that's what it is for them, but going in, that's what was, the discussion was about. And, uh, and that was the hurdle, always has and still is, it sounds like. So I don't know what more to say about that. It wasn't like.
Without a, without a attachment to the building and that's your stack, you can't enter that building without being in a driveway. I think that could be a little bit of a heartburn. All right, the, the public hearing is closed. So make a motion, whatever.
I'll make a motion. I don't have my iPad, so we're going to go through my phone.
Speak right into your microphone. It's not, sorry. Unfortunately, it told me out, out there, so.
Got a little bit of a cold, so that probably makes it worse. Uh, this is Commissioner Mitchell. I make a motion to approve the request of C-24-15A, the conditional use permit for a new restaurant, quick-service establishment located at 29, 293 East Telegraph. um, the conditional use permit for a new restaurant, Quick Service Tavern, located at 29, 293 East Telegraph. With the four findings and 11 conditions.
I have a first from Commissioner Mitchell. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Tupoe, I second that.
So I have a first from Mitchell and a second from Tupoe. We'll call voting. Commissioner Shill?
I, for reasons I voiced.
Commissioner Tupoe?
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell? I am Commissioner Bullock, I am an aye as well, so this will go to City Council.
Next week.
Next week. The next on the agenda is 5B. This is a request to approve a designated use of a current-zoned PUDR property, approximately 22.55 acres located at the southeast corner of Washington Parkway and Main Street. The applicant is Wes Davis. We will turn the time over to Eldon.
Over one year ago, the city approved an updated site design for this property. However, the applicant is now proposing to go back to the original design. The surrounding zoning to this parcel is Solente, PCD to the north, Rio, PCD to the west, PUD, C to the east, and R16 to the south. The general plan land use designation is medium-high density, which carries a 7 to 12 dwelling unit per acre ratio. This development is proposing a 7.14 density unit per acre ratio, which is well within the general plan allowance. The project design is in compliance with the PUD Multiple Family Development Standards portion of the zoning. The applicant is proposing 161 townhome units. Each dwelling unit will be a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, two-car garage townhome with a double-car driveway. The required amount of visitor parking is 50 spaces, and the applicant is proposing 104. Parking is adequate for the project. Amenities are in the form of a playground, pickleball courts, volleyball court, pool, exercise station, dog park, and pavilions. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of Z dash 24 dash 06 for the zone change request, updating the design and use of the PUDR-zoned property. And this goes on to City Council based on the findings and conditions in the report. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
So, we, we approved it, if I remember this right. We approved, we approved this one, and then they came back and changed it. We approved that one. I remember thinking that that one was a better design than this one, and now we're back to the original?
Correct.
So, I can't remember what the last one was.
Isn't it possible to, yeah, well, I was, had the same thought.
The last one was four-rent townhomes, my understanding. This is for sale townhomes.
But the other layout was different, too.
Layout was different.
The difference in what you just mentioned, ones rentals, ones, these are for sale?
And the elevations or the size of, yeah.
Did the size of the units change?
What's that?
Did the units change?
I think, I think the other ones were a little bigger. There weren't as many. The number was down just a little bit, if I remember right. Um, square footage was a little higher on them, but not much.
Did it have the basements on it?
Their amenity area from the original, and the man, God, if I remember right, this is a little bit more upgraded than the original was, which is a good bonus on that, so, sorry, Commissioner.
Was, did the last one have the basements in it?
No.
Project, that's you're thinking of another one that-
Okay.
There's a lot of discussion too about what was gonna happen at what phase on this particular one. I wanna say, for some reason, I might have it confused in my head too. I'd love to see the other one, to see-
Sure, I do apologize. The, the previous one that was on did have unfinished basements in it.
On the second?
Underneath. Not all, every single one of them did, but a large number of them had, had basements in them.
And that was on revision two?
Yes.
Basically.
The one in the middle, yeah. That is not gonna be built now.
Yeah, and then there was something with the, that's the one that did have the, um, the phasing units that we were talking about with, when the amenities were gonna be in the trails. Is that the same as in this one?
They've broken those out in the phase plan. Um, amenities will come, or they're proposing them to come with the phase. There's also condition 10 that says all amenities shall be completed in their respective phases before any building permits can be pulled for subsequent phases. So phase one-
Do you have elevations on this?
Phase one would include the pool area.
Am I missing the phases somewhere?
The, the lines are hard to see. I think they were on that first page that Drew had up.
Okay.
They're kind of faint, you really have to look at them.
We'll go back to those in a second. Someone asked for the elevation finishes, so the look like on the fronts, the sides, and the rear. And then phasing, I'm pretty sure is on this one.
We got phases broke down.
Yeah, I guess my only concern about the amenities going with the phases, the big part of the pickleball courts, sand volleyball, playground are all coming in phase four. I, I don't know if we what we've done on PUDs in the past, and I'm just throwing it out for the commissioners, is you can say by X amount of units, all the amenities will be in. That'll take, take it out of the phasing area. You know, now you could break that if you wanted, because they are gonna put the pool in, it looks like. Um, and then this area looks like it's part of phase one, so you're gonna be getting some trail. Well, Storm Pond is not an amenity. I think this is for stormwater, of course, but you'd end up getting the pool in phase one. The units are all in phase one. Is the way the numbering goes, so. But I think in this case, because it is important to have the amenities, and we've done it with other PUDs, you could come up with a percentage, you know, we've done it between 20 and 30%, you know, before, on their 30th or 25th C of O. When I say percent, 25%, not the 25th number, so if there's 160, is there 161 total, Eldon? Is that what I'm?
Yes, yep.
So, you know, you would say at, at 25% would be 40 on the 40th one by the complete, that, that, that's up to you, you folks. You could do 25 or 30, and the council can either or do their thing too. But that's just throwing it out for you, I-
Looks like there's six phases, so.
Six.
My mic? It's on? Oh, yeah, it looks like there's six phases, so if everything's coming in by phase four, I would imagine they would have to sell a certain number of units to fund all of that. I think there's six phases, so I think phase four, because everything's done by phase four.
Just trying to locate phase four, because it almost looks like, oh, phase four's up on top. Why is phase three, phase three is so far over, phase four?
I think phase four, just to help you, I think it starts here, like at 115 unit, and across the street at 137, and then going south on those units. So there's not a lot of units in phase four. 137 through, or I guess it's 121 through 37, and then 115 through 120.
We, we gotta be careful when we do that too, because we know they don't always go in order. So I, I think the percentage, I think the percentage is better than the phase, because of the fact that I'm, Cody, Cody understands it as well as the rest of us, that by the time you start a phase, you're usually doing phase 10 before phase two, sometimes. Because if they want to start at the back and work forward, I mean, that would make the most-
So the number, if you pick, you know, let's say-
If you go with a percentage twice.
At 25 to 30, at 25 it'd be 40 units, you know, at 30% it'd be 53 units. You know, by then, they'd have to have all the amenities in by that. That's, again, you can pick whatever you want, I'm just throwing, you know, at 30% it'd be 53, 52-ish around there. Or you can even pick a number if you wanted, you know, knowing that that's what that is.
So the ones that back Main Street, how big's that buffer between the house and, and the, I'm assuming there's a, a wall that runs Main Street, right?
The larger part is 19 feet, and then it kind of tapers down.
But the backyard is, what, what's that say? Sorry?
30, 31 feet from the property line, where the limited common area is. And then these particular ones, I don't know if they put a dimension in the backyard, because some of them vary, but it looks like it's gonna be roughly 15, because this is 30 and it looks the same divided by two. So if you're talking 47 feet from the property line to the back of the home. Now, this is, the reason this is kind of big, this area where my arrow is, is a power line. And there's a power easement that they can't, they have to stay completely out of.
But that's, isn't that, um, Washington Parkway right there?
Yes.
What about on Main?
Well, Main Street is, it's where Main Street and the Parkway meet.
Right.
Right now.
And so there, but there's a wall, and-
Here?
No, I was talking down on, on the Main Street side. Because that road sits off a ways anyway, because you have the power line and all that. The, what I was worried about was just the wall and the, the landscape, that there's enough that it sits back a little ways. Just off the road. I mean, I just want, if you're driving up Main Street, you want to look over, you'll see the back of their house, you want to make sure it looks nice. That's the, that's the point I'm trying to figure out, where-
There will be a block wall along Main Street.
That's what I, that's what I was asking, the block wall.
It'll catch the back of their-
And then, and then from the block wall to the sidewalk, is there a landscape strip there as well, plus the sidewalk, right?
Starts, yeah, roughly 19 feet and kind of varies along there.
That's what I was, that's, that's what I was trying to make sure there was.
Why are we not seeing that on their drawings? I don't see that wall.
So how many units are there?
The residence backyard will be all, okay, block.
And then that's all landscaped up to it?
So if Main Street is just a continuous?
Yep, that's, that's what I was, I was trying to see if, where it was. I didn't realize it was, I didn't know if the back of the houses were gonna be the block wall, or if there was, or how that was going to look, because in the thing, it didn't, or I didn't see it. Does anybody have any other questions for Eldon? Okay, I'll open this up to a public hearing. Does anyone here want to speak on 5B? Excuse me, hold on a second.
I'm sorry, am I not allowed to speak?
No, I just need you, I just need you to-
My name is Kathy Lisak, and we have a home on Rio, right across the road from Main Street, and she has a wall there that people walk by. And I don't know how high that wall is gonna be, but people look over into her yard all the time. So I don't know if that's a concern that you're gonna want to look at when you're developing 160 townhomes. My great concern is, when we bought that house, we were not ever told that this big, huge 160 homes or townhomes were gonna be right across the street from where my daughter's living right now. And then you've got those other homes that you're gonna be building that are million-dollar homes. I'm just concerned for the people that live there right now, traffic and the timeframe. And, you know, right now, the, the lifestyle is, the people that live there, is it gonna change? Because you're gonna have 160 other families moving in. To where we saw across the street, there was only gonna be so many townhomes being built, or whatever apartment buildings that was told to us, and we bought that home. And now we get this map showing there's, you're gonna be, build this nice facility, but I'm just thinking of traffic and all these other homes that are gonna be built in that area. So just as a concerned mom, that, you know, and what she's living with, and I just, you know, you know, looking at the future. So that's the only reason why I came tonight, because I wanted to just express how I feel for someone that lives right across the way from where you're gonna be building that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this? Okay, then I will close the public hearing portion of this. Is there anyone else? Do you guys have any questions for the applicant?
As a traffic study, number two is a condition for a traffic study. At what point is that done?
Construction drawing time, more than likely. And we always have them kind of look at it and give the 10,000, you know, foot view, and the engineer will say, yeah, this, you know, and then they dive in and give it its actual grading. And if they have to make some adjustments to that, then they, they will, right? So, but again, Main Street, one of our major roads, the Parkway, one of our most major roads, it's, they're made to move traffic, so.
Did you want to?
So the detention pond, is that out back?
Yeah, I kind of showed it. This is the least thing we have to worry about with this project. This project is the one that kind of donated a major regional detention area. In fact, part of this project is in, this lot is part of that regional, so I'm not in any way, shape, or form worried about the water coming off of here, because it's going into that ma- massive detention area. Just to the south.
Does the city normally take ownership of detention?
Normally, I'm glad you threw that word in there, no, they don't. But when it's a regional detention pond that helps out getting the water throughout the city, because again, for some of you who've been here a while, you know that Main Street was one of our nightmares whenever we had those, those years, we had our 500, you know, storms, we had three of them in, in a, in a month, and they're only supposed to happen. You know, when they say it's not once every 500 years, it just-
500% chance.
But anyway, we have, we had some of our worst ones, and Main Street was one of our problem, biggest problem areas. That, that detention pond that got put in up there, um, has turned everything around. You know, and then some of the piping we've been able to do, et cetera. Uh, so that's been a humongous-
I just heard that today, and I just kind of, I thought, why the heck do we want to own a detention pond?
It's major like that in coming in, then we, we generally will, because it's hard to tie that to somebody else, because you have to keep the maintenance on it. It's a yearly inspection. And although, so when we're using it as a regional gathering point that helps our stormwater system, then yeah, there's times that we will. We, I think we have two or three of them that are in our name, and we kind of- that are in our name, and we kind of keep an eye on, and are able to keep the maintenance up on them to make sure we don't have issues, so.
Well, it's been approved once, I don't know.
Twice.
A third's a charm, so.
By which unit do we want all the amenities done?
I would say by 55, 55 units. 40% is 60-some. I counted phase three, phase one, basically, and that would have been 58, basically. So if we throw it at 55 or 58?
Or 40%?
Well, 40% 60-some. Yeah, but why not just throw a number on it? You know, we don't have to figure anything out.
Let's go with 55.
What's that?
I just wanted to clarify. I looked all over for the width on this driveway. I was just asking Eldon and Rick, the engineer, because there is not a dimension on it. I just wanted to state it in here that they, you know, I was going to bring that to you. That part of your motion, I'd like to have it, needs to be a minimum of 18 feet wide. Because I have two-car garage, I need at least a two-car driveway for that. So for whoever ends up making that motion, I just.
We need to.
That the width is a minimum 18 feet wide on each driveway. Sorry, I didn't mean to jump into your other thing, but I wanted to get it clarified before I forgot about it.
Do you want to make a motion?
I can, I can try it.
I don't have my paperwork, I couldn't get my computer.
Okay, no, you're fine.
Sorry.
Let me make sure I'm looking at the right way. Okay. Ms. Commissioner Tuppo, I make a motion for Z-24-06, request to approve design use of the currently zoned PUDR property, approximately 22.55 acres, located at the southeast corner of Washington Parkway and Main Street, with the added condition that the minimum width of the driveways is 18 feet wide, and also adding another condition that all of the amenities are completed by unit 55.
By CO of 55, is that how we say it?
The CO helps us, because that's a threshold point of sale and ownership. So we always like to put in the certificate of occupancy of the 55th unit, so.
Yes.
Did you say 50 or 55?
By the time the CO is issued for unit 55.
Ms. Schill, I second.
So I have a first by Tuppo and a second by Schill. Individual voting, Schill?
Aye.
Tuppo?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
I'm Bullock, I'm an a as well, and this will go to City Council next week. And that is the end of planning commission. I look for a motion to adjourn.
Ms. Schill, I motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Tuppo, I second that.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We will start the land use authority meeting in just.